Order at 7:00 PM. Candy, can you let us know if we have a quorum?
Yes, ma'am. We have President Councilmember Contreras, Councilmember Runnabong, Mayor Pro Tem Young, Councilmember Kremel, we have absent Mayor Moss, and Mayor Van Sant.
All right, if you could all stand and join me in a moment of silence. Thank you, and if you would join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Before we get to public comments, our city attorney, Pat Chester, would like to make a comment regarding an item.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. Yes, if any citizens are here tonight to speak on the rezone of the 20.31 acre tract, if you just let you know that that application was withdrawn, so there is no public hearing on that rezone. The rezone request is dead right now. It's been withdrawn.
Do I have to say anything?
Yes, and so we do have public comments by Mr. Martin. If you would like to come up and introduce yourself and give us your comments.
And it is on that 20 acres?
Okay.
And it may be effective for some time in the future, and I'm sure they will not give up.
If you could just let us know your name and address before you let us know.
Yes, ma'am. I'm Michael Martin, and I live at 600 Knights Bridge Road here in Willow Park. And I wanted to address the city council today and the people of Willow Park. Now, I've only lived in Willow Park for about 27 years, and I can tell you that the main reason that I moved here and moved my family here those years ago was because it was a quiet neighborhood with relative safety and security. We didn't move here because it had great roads. They weren't that good back then either. And it was the location, the location, the location. And what was so special about this location, it had at least some landmass around each home, basically an acre. So we weren't on top of each other, and a special part of it was, there was very little traffic. And you know what that means? It means that I can get out and walk without being concerned at every step that I might be ran over by someone's speeding vehicle. It means you can walk with your children in relative safety even though it has no sidewalks. It means that even though I'm 70 years old, I don't have to be all that concerned, and I can feel safe here when I walk. So what does this new 20-acre development mean to us? It means that if you, our representatives, did not take heed of the people's needs, this development will destroy all the things we moved here for. And you know what? If you manage this right, you can help us maintain that safety and the quiet streets we so cherish here. But if you allow this development to make corridors of ingress and egress, or main artery streets through our wonderful neighborhood, you will allow that to be destroyed. I say this because, at the meeting I attended, a meeting relevant to the zoning, the drawing offs of from the developer depicted using Royal View, a street that goes directly by my house, to be a major corridor to get into and out of that development, perhaps another was yet. Now, if it precedes us, the developer wishes it to, then Royal View will become very busy by design. If, however, the developer is forced to put in a cul-de-sac at the top of the hill adjacent to Royal View, at least the traffic will have to go to one of the major corridors and not a peaceful street like Royal View that is presently pretty calm and safe by design. You may decide that it is imminent that you let this growth occur. I am simply asking you to be cognizant of the present design offered by the developer and ask them to keep the traffic off and away from our streets that are pretty calm and safe at this moment. I realize that Royal View is definitely the main corridor for those of us living here now to come in and out of the neighborhood, and it has served us well. And let us keep it that way. It is decently, a decently peaceful street, one that we have lived with since the inception of Willow Park. And I know it may be not on the agenda at the moment, but I'm sure it will probably come back again later. So just to keep that in y'all's mind when they do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we have no other public comments?
No, ma'am.
All right. The only item on the consent agenda is the city council meeting minutes from July 27, 2021. Do we have any discussion or a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the city council meeting minutes. Sorry, Rose.
We have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor? Thank you. The first item on the regular agenda is to consider and act on a final plat of a replat of lots 2 through 5, Block E, Crown Point Edition, Phase 4, being 5.29 acres, City of Willow Park, Parker County, Texas, located on the IH20 Service Road at Gemma Drive and Mary Lou Drive. Betty?
Good evening, council. This is a replat of 5.29 acres, lots 2 through 5, of this 6.85 acre block. If you remember last month, we replatted the property into five tracks. Now they're proposing that that be reduced to three lots. This final plat was approved in July on the 13th, and now they're coming back, as I said, with three lots. The property is zone commercial and is in the I-20 overlay district. Access is from the service road off of Mary Lou Drive and also off of Gemma Drive. J.D. Toll's Drive is at the north corner. You can see, I've highlighted in your exhibits, the three proposed lots. The larger lot is adjacent to the interstate and to Mary Lou and Gemma Drive. The properties are served by City Water and Sewer. There will be two entrances provided on Gemma Drive, one for the Lot 1R is already in place, and then there will be an additional drive entrance to Lot 3R, further to the south off of Gemma. And there is one proposed entrance off of Mary Lou, so there will only be, there will be controlled access and cross access. The cross access easement for the utilities, as well as access to the lots that runs through the center of the subdivision, will also wrap around Lot 4, which is proposed, to provide that cross access. It also provides a continuous fire lane. Staff and planning and zoning commission have reviewed this replat. It does meet the requirements of the subdivision ordinance for a final plat and both recommend approval as presented. I can answer any questions.
Betty, is there going to be adequate parking when they've redone this from 5 to 3?
Yes, actually, that is, that is one of the reasons why you will see that Lot 3R is larger. That was to get additional parking up on the northwest corner. And we also have, on 1R, we have a site plan that has been approved on it, and the parking is on there, as well as the landscaping.
Next question, the entrance exit on Gemma Drive, the first one, that comes right off of the access road, is that far enough down where it's not going to cause an issue for folks to make a right turn in there?
It is approximately 100 foot back.
Okay.
It's like 94, 95, and normally they do not look at one that would be less than, usually you're trying to stack two or three cars, so that should be one that would.
Okay. Any other questions for Betty? Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the final plat of replat lots 2 through 5, Block E, Crown Point Edition, Phase 4, being 5.29 acres, City of Willow Park, Parker County, Texas.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
A motion and a second. Any further discussion or questions? All right, all in favor? Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, the next item on the agenda is to discuss, consider, and act on approving a proposed ad valorem tax for the period beginning October 1, 2021, through September 30, 2022. Mr. Brian?
Counsel. Madam Mayor Pro Tem, thank you. So when we did our budget workshop roughly about a month ago, we went through quite a few scenarios with the caveat that we had a certain value number that we felt good I feel like that was a good workshop and was productive in the sense that we found out what our budget needs were. But one of the driving factors with any budget is going to be the property taxes assessed. A couple of things happened between that date and this. One, our values did not come in as I anticipated. They were a little lower. And two, the implementation of SB 2 has kind of changed the way things operate. So what we did, I remember telling you guys at the end of that, I needed to wait on the worksheets to come in before we can make this decision and so on and so forth. We got the worksheets in, and what used to be a seven-page document turned into a 15-page document, a little bit more detailed. They changed some of the things that were, how we're going to operate moving forward. Some things stay the same. That being said, one of the key components is what's called the unused increment tax rate. And I can get into the weeds on that at a later date, but your voter-approved rate, which was part of SB 2, is a 3.5% increase in your ad valorem taxes. 3.5% increase represents roughly $65,000 total on a $1.7 million line item. So last year, because of COVID, we did not use the entire 3.5%. So we had what the state has called an unused increment rate, which is approximately 5 cents. So what we did after visiting with the appraisal district, and we had a very good meeting with them, we determined that we will go to the maximum voter approval rate as set by the state of Texas. This is the proposed rate, not the final rate. The difference between the two is this. If you go up to the maximum approved rate, which I believe is 0.56665, it's a little less than what the state put out there, you can always come off of that in a couple of weeks when you set the final rate. If you set a rate, once you set the rate, you cannot go higher than that. You can only go lower. The county did a similar measure at their last commissioners' court meeting, I think it was maybe Monday, that's when they met, was it yesterday? Or last week? It's Monday. Was it Monday? They're all running together on me now. Long story short, staff's going to recommend that you go to the maximum VAR allowed by the state with the option that you can come off of it. I will say this. One of the, the main driver for staff doing that is it's been the desire of staff and I would say council for the past two years is to fully staff the fire department. Chief Lenore has asked for at least three new firemen each of the last two years, and we have said, you know, we'll figure out how to get there when we get there. We now, at the budget that I presented a couple of weeks ago, we had them starting on an April 1 start date. Because of this 5 cent increment, and it's a use it or lose it, all or nothing component, and there's a way you can manipulate some of the, some of the M and O, but that 5 cents is, if you take just a little bit of it, you got to take all of it. So one of the things that we looked at was having three new firemen begin on October 1 versus April 1. And I think Chief Lenore would be appreciative of, as he's nodding.
Absolutely.
And I don't think you'll have any problems filling those positions October 1?
No.
Okay. So that was the main driver for this. Mike gets his guys, and he gets his guys six months sooner. You still have significant pay raises for the police department in there, and so this is still a back the blue, back the public service, public safety budget, and that's our staff recommendation, and I'm welcome to answer any questions.
So our total percentage of M and O going to public safety, police, and fires, what percentage?
So with new numbers, your increase to M and O is roughly 139,000 and change. Salaries only increase is roughly 235,000 and change. In fact, I think I got it. Y'all will have this spreadsheet, this is just from my notes. Yeah, 139,936 is what your M and O increase will be, and your fire department salaries are going to be roughly 235,000.
But overall, our M and O, we're over 90%. Just police and fire, are we?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, yeah. Yes. You're still, I don't know what the exact number is, but you're going to be close to 90% of the, of the taxes are going to go towards public safety.
Okay.
And that includes sales tax, and that includes some development, and that includes just about every tax dollar that comes in.
So when we get these new firemen, is there additional equipment we have to be concerned about or going to be purchased that we have to have?
I'm sorry, you asked.
If, when we get these three additional firemen, are there going to be more, is there more equipment we have to procure or are we all set?
No, sir. We're all set.
Okay.
I'm just ready for the work go.
Okay.
So essentially, the difference in the budget that we discussed previously is the firemen starting as soon as the fiscal year starts.
Yes.
We did not change other aspects significantly.
No.
But it will be the new proposed budget for the tax rate that we've discussed here will be on the website tomorrow.
When, if y'all adopt the 0.56, I'll change the preliminary. Again, I want to stress this, it's a preliminary budget, we're not voting on it yet. I'll change the fiery, fire salary line item to, I want to say roughly 700,000, and then the property tax line item will be right at 1.8 million. I don't, I didn't have the exact numbers as we talked about earlier today. But I'll make those two, those will be the two changes in the budget. This does not change PD. I will say, talking with Captain Franklin, this budget would provide for salaries for two additional police officers should the cops grant come through. And so you would have some flexibility of hiring two additional police officers that you don't really have right now.
And what we're looking to do tonight is to set that rate, to publish it, to still have a public hearing.
Yes, yes.
Over this month.
Yes, ma'am.
It's not a done deal, it's just to give us one more chance to discuss it.
Part of the new requirements of SB 2, and we had to do this last year, and last year was a COVID year, so it was kind of, we're just doing almost a bare bones, just the same thing we did the year before. But we had to vote on the preliminary, and it was pretty simple and pretty easy, and it is this year as well. But when we run the ad, and you'll have a roll call vote here in a second, when we run the ad, you'll have an a or an nay, and that's going to go in the ad in the newspaper. We'll also put that on the website, and so that's going to be the next agenda item, but I wanted you guys, that's the reason why we have to have the preliminary vote tonight. One other thing, interest and sinking, and I have an out visit with Jake, so he's going to get this raw. Part of SB 2 is, we always had a fund balance at the end of the year in interest and sinking. It wasn't a lot. It was less than 100,000 off of a, what, $1.5 million line item? And that is no more. The state will now zero out our interest and sinking fund on September 30, and they will apply any remaining funds in interest and sinking to the next year's balance, meaning we're going to have to collect 100% of interest and sinking to meet our statutory requirements.
But you're in my position?
Yes.
Yes, yes. I've got enough things to worry about, I'll worry about that one in about nine months, but I wanted you guys to be advised of that as well. And that's in the staff memo, too. So, but the key thing is, your fire department, your public safety will be addressed, as always in this budget.
All right, do you have any other questions, Mr. Brian? I think there's a suggested motion in the packet.
Yes.
Page 22. Would anyone like to make a motion?
So we just need to read this part here out here?
Wrong one.
Oh, sorry.
That one, not there.
Yeah. So I move that the City of Willow Park assess a proposed maintenance and operations tax rate of .30162 dollars and an interest and sinking rate of .26503 dollars for a total tax rate of .56665 dollars, and that, a roll call vote be taken per state statute.
All right, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
A motion and a second. Any further discussion or questions? All in favor, we do the roll call.
Roll call. Vote would be Councilmember Contreras?
Yay.
Councilmember Runnabong?
Yeah.
Mayor Pro Tem Young?
Yay.
Councilmember Kremel?
Yay.
All right, motion passes. Thank you very much. Moving on to the next item, very similar, to discuss and consider an act to set the date, time, and place for a public hearing on proposed ad valorem tax rate and budget for the period beginning October 1, 2021, through September 30, 2022.
Thank you, Madam Mayor Pro Tem. Again, this is a continuation of the agenda item previous. Now that you have adopted a proposed tax rate, we are now can move forward with the public hear, with the notice, excuse me. You have a sample of notice in the paper or in your packet. The only thing missing is the, how the vote went, and we will fill that in tonight. There's also a, on your, on the dais in front of you is another hearing, another notice that's going to go in the paper for the, for the budget. It states that we will, property taxes more than last year by 139,936 or 8.20%, and of that amount, 42,741 is tax revenue from new property added to the tax roll this year. Those two are statutory requirements that will go in the paper and on our website, and there will also be, I believe we're going to be in the truth and taxation page from the Parker County Appraisal District as well. I need to get a hold of Rick in the morning and let him know how the vote went. This ad will run, both this ad, this is the one y'all should have, and then this is the one that was in the packet. Both of those will be in the community news on Friday, on the 13th. And then staff is recommending that we hold a public hearing on the tax rate and budget on August 24 at 7:00 PM.
Any other questions regarding setting the date of the public hearing? Do we have a motion?
I move that the City of Willow Park hold a public hearing on the tax rates and budget for fiscal year '21 through '22, a period beginning on October 1, 2021, and ending on September 30, 2022, on August 24, 2021, at 7:00 PM, at the Willow Park City Hall located at 516 Ranch House Road, and authorize staff to place public notices as required.
All right, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any other questions or discussion? Is this roll call or is this majority?
No.
All in favor? Motion passes, thank you.
Thank you, counsel.
All right, the next item on the agenda is Jake Weber will give a quarterly financial report.
Good evening. So we'll go over the third fiscal quarter report, and again, if you have any questions, let me know. I'm going to start on that first page, obviously have the numbers and try to explain a few of the things that I'm seeing there. So on the general fund, year-to-date, it's really about as good as it's looked since I've been here, you know, you're really in good shape on your general fund. You can see you're up 514,000 for the year. The biggest driver of that is probably, you know, you got the COVID funds. It's 300,000, and I think you paid out 50, so you're net up 250 on that. But you paid out, on the park, you paid out 135 to kind of supplement some things there. So you're, you know, you think that offsets that a little bit. Very minimal capital expenditures this year, so obviously that helps. You know, I know you haven't had a lot of budget for that, you haven't spent many dollars on that side. Sales tax obviously is a big driver, again, you continue to see that go up. Property tax, you're hitting budget on that, and development has been strong. So all those things kind of combined, you know, puts you in a situation where you're really in good shape on your general fund, you know, three-fourths through the year. And so I think, you know, I anticipate that to be a surplus for the year, the way things are headed. You do see water, wastewater, you know, you're down a little bit at this point. The biggest things, as I was looking at that, your impact fees are down a little bit from what they've been in the past, so you know, those are sometimes one-time, obviously, and so that is not recurring, so that can happen year to year. Your actual user fees are up just a little bit, but still you think with some new connection stuff, wetter, weather, you know, it's probably not up as much as you would have thought. So your revenue may not be quite where you'd want it to be, you see you're 66%. You know, July, August, September, you hope to catch up. So I think we'll probably come pretty close, honestly, on the revenue side.
We're catching up.
Yeah, I figured, I was saying, you probably see in the usage here the last few weeks, so, because I think this is as of June 30, and it was still pretty wet in June. So I think you're right, we'll probably catch up on that. And then obviously, your debt services is more. So you think we've had some new debt that's come on the books the last couple of years, and we're starting to pay that. And so this is one of the things I know that me and Brian discussed on the budget this year is, this is why it's good that the general fund going forward is pretty much standalone, you know, when you look at your next year's budget, so that way you don't have to worry about budgeting any type of transfer from water or wastewater, because now you have some more debt on those books, so they can kind of worry about self-sustaining on their own and now to supplement the general fund. So that, you kind of see that here as to why that's happening. And also wastewater, we're going to have the additional debt that's going to come on the book, payment start on that in February next year. So you're going to need to maybe move some money from water to wastewater to cover that if the revenue's not there yet. So that, all said, that's a good thing, again, that the general fund's so strong, and again, I think water, wastewater will end up fine for the year. I think we'll catch up these last three months based off, you know, the season. The capital projects, you just kind of, give you an overview on that, you can kind of see on the water line where we're at. I'd anticipate, I'm sure we've had some big invoices come through here in the last few weeks, so obviously that will, that will continue to get spent down. The wastewater, the package plant, so that got funded late June, so that's why you see that on the books, we'll start to track that as expenses come in. Obviously, the only cost there really was just your debt issuance cost and things like that to issue the debt. And so that's why you can't see any expenses there. And then on the park, you can see, everything was spent, you know, there's like 1,000 And then on the park, you can see, everything was spent. You know, there's like $1,000 left in that account, that tech star account. And then, as y'all discussed prior, there was some money spent from the general fund, covered some extra costs there, I think, for the restrooms that y'all put in. So that's why you see it as a negative, but it's just because the general fund covers some of that. Any questions, just from a high level, kind of looking at those funds? I'm not going to get into too much on a lot of these line items on the, on the next pages. You know, it goes through every single, you know, income and expense. If you have anything, let me know. The only thing I guess I'd point out, like I said, the sales tax is strong. You know, we're projecting, I think, will probably come close to 1.4. You know, I know Brian's been keeping an eye on that.
I was hoping we, I just checked, I was hoping we'd get some, we'll get it tomorrow.
Don't have it yet, yeah.
We'll get it tomorrow.
But certainly, I think you're going to go over your budget there. So obviously, that's, that's driving your revenue growth. Your M and O, again, you're right on budgets. That's great in terms of, you know, what you budgeted and meeting that. The only thing, and I think I've mentioned this before, the really, the only revenue item that, you know, when you look at it just analytically, you say, okay, this doesn't really make sense, would be the core. You know, when I just kind of ran some numbers historically, you know, 2018, at this point in the year, in 2018, it was 155,000. 2019, it was 112,000. You know, last year was 80,000. You think, well, COVID, they couldn't have anything going on. You'd expect that. So you would expect it to come back up to at least probably the 2019 number or even more, because you have more people that live here. So you think hypothetically, you'd have more revenue coming in. Whereas, we're only at 70 this year. So it's 35. There's no line item above that. So that's the only thing, when you kind of just look at the numbers, it doesn't necessarily make sense, just based off every other trend that we have on the revenue side. So I just wanted to point that out. But I know we've kind of kept an eye on that, but that just kind of gives you a little history on that number.
So just to be clear, court isn't even meeting the COVID number from last year?
It's below COVID number. Exactly. Yeah. We think, and it was shut down from March, you know, several months where they weren't doing anything. So that's why, I mean, you look at it, it didn't make sense seeing that.
Thank you.
Jake, on that, I don't, no, I'm not looking at that by quarter. Certainly, the first or second quarter might have had some more of the COVID impact on that. But third quarter, not much of an improvement in just the third quarter, when we've seen very little COVID impact.
You know, not that I noticed, but I don't have the quarter-by-quarter available.
Okay.
So I can't say for sure on that, you know, in terms of how it's trended each quarter.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Can we, can we get that to Leah?
Yeah, absolutely.
I'd like to see that number as well.
Yes, absolutely. Yeah, we can get month-over-month, quarter reporter. Yeah, no problem.
Perfect. Thank you.
Let's see. And then the only other thing, I'm just kind of, kind of flip through these. And go to, so if you go, really, I'm going to go all the way to the cash balance page. It's going to be on page 18 of the packet. So again, there wasn't really anything else that I noticed in some of the other funds I haven't talked about already that it was unusual or anomalies in terms of whether over budget as a percentage or dollar amount, when I was kind of looking at that. Just looking at your cash, just a few things. So you can see our operating cash, that very top line item, we're at 707, and our general fund, almost 708. You know, last year, we're at 491. So you can see just the growth that we've had there. So that's great. You know, just puts you in a good cash position. And then you see, yeah, US Bank under wastewater, that's that new debt. So that, again, that just came in in June. We'll start to spend that down. So those are just kind of a couple of things I was going to point out. And then just on the last page, a couple of the graphs. You know, the debt balance by fund, I think I mentioned this last time, just because you've issued a lot of new debt. So you kind of see how, how that's changed. So like I said, last year, at this time, as a percentage, your general fund was carrying 54% of your debt. Water was 36, wastewater was 10. So you can kind of see with some of the new issuances, how it's really received for the last 12 months. And then also, you can kind of see the trend on the bottom left with your, your tax revenues. You see your sales taxes creeping up, you know, closer to your M and O tax. So that's obviously a good thing, as you continue to see the growth. And, you know, I think, based off your budget, that M and O may start coming and swinging back. And part of that's because you dropped your M and O rate a little bit last year. So you think, even though your values have continued to go up, the actual dollars brought in were down a little bit on that.
And I would, I think, this year being an anomaly with that 5 cent.
Yeah.
You were at 53, we're going to go to 51.
Yeah.
Because of the 5 cents, you're going to go up. But I think you'll see that tax rate go, you know, we were at 53 for what, hell, four years, five years, something like that?
Well, at least, yeah.
So we were just kind of cruising along with that same rate. We were going to drop it this year. SB 2, after we fully understood what it did, we went up. We're going to come back down next year or two. I would, I would anticipate somewhere around 51, 52.
Yeah. So, yeah, I think your tax dollars, you're seeing a good, you know, the projection there. Obviously, the thing to look out for is on your utility side, that you want to start seeing some of those new connections with the new debt that's been issued. Hopefully, that will start to kind of reflect, and you'll see some increases there as well. Because I think we kind of anticipated that with some of the models, say, okay, we're, you're anticipating, you know, however many new connections over the next few years. So we'll start seeing that as well.
We're seeing more building permits come in. That, that gives me a little bit of...
Yeah. And I know with COVID, everything has been, you've had a lot of delays with construction, and things get pushed back probably more than you thought initially. So, any questions, anything?
I like that we're diversified in terms of taxes versus, property taxes versus sales tax. We're not really over-dependent on one or the other.
Exactly. Yeah. Absolutely. That's how y'all want to do it.
All right. Any other questions? All right. Thank you, Jake.
Thanks.
All right. I don't think we have any items for the executive session.
No.
So we will move to mayor and council member comments. I have nothing specific. Thank you. Anyone else?
Yeah, this may be an item for the next council meeting, but there's been, can you hear? So, apologize. So we have some citizens that have some concerns about swimming pools that are not fenced, and some other issues like vehicles in yards, sheds or buildings that are being constructed, and are they properly permitted, things like that. So I don't know if we need to have a discussion about that, and, you know...
We certainly can. The one issue with the swimming pool, I can tell you that, that's being addressed by staff.
Okay.
I don't think we've had a chance to get back to two or, two or three of the people that have emailed in. But staff is addressing that issue. As far as the buildings, accessory buildings, people come in, they get their building permit. Most of them do. Sometimes it's constructed, and then we don't see it until after it's done, and we, and we go deal with it after the fact. But we could certainly have that discussion as far as what you'd like to see. You're probably talking more along the lines of more vigorous code enforcement.
Yeah. It may be something we have to go to eventually, so.
Any other council member have comments?
And thank you for the water connection. What we bring in now, daily, 300,000?
We are bringing in just under half a million from Fort Worth right now. Not that the system is requiring it, but we have, one of the benefits is we're trying to figure out what this new toy can do. And so it used to take six days to fill this water tower up behind us. It now takes an hour. And so that is a big, big change in how we operate the system. And so what it has done is has allowed our pumps to rest and recover. The situation we've had over the summers, if you remember, it always happened towards the end of the summer. And basically, from Memorial Day on, our pumps were running 24/7. And you simply cannot do that without something breaking down. And so what we have done with Fort Worth is it's allowed us to let the pumps rest. We're actually doing some repair and maintenance on pumps in the summertime, which we've never been able to do before. And so we're kind of seeing how this is, how the system's going to operate with Fort Worth water. But ultimately, this time next year, we'll have access to 3.5 million gallons of water from Fort Worth, plus the, and I'm, I'm being very conservative, the 1.5 million that we'll have out of our system. So this time next year, you'll have up to 5 million gallons of water a day. If we're using 5 million gallons of water a day this time next year, we have a lot of people watering the yards that shouldn't be.
So what's our output now, is about 1.6, 1.7?
We're running about, yeah, about 1.6, 1.7. I was telling Pat, you know, after the third day, we could handle one or two hot days with demand. Swimming pools, we've discovered is a bigger, because they automatically fill. We've discovered that's almost as bad as, as some yards. We can handle two to three days. But you get to that third to fourth day, and the system just at some point breaks down. It's like running, you're running a sprint. You can run 100 yards, but can you run 1,000 yards? And so we, Saturday afternoon, I mean, force a habit, I just walked into the public works and said, you know, where are the tanks? And they're 100% full. It's 5 o'clock in the afternoon, it's 96 degrees. People are watering their yards, and the system's 100% full. And for the first time since I've been here, I took a deep breath. And so thank you, guys, for the investment. I know the public works guys, thank you. Fire department thanks you. There's, if there's a fire, there happens to be water in the tank for them to fight it with. So thank you, guys, for the investment into the system. I don't know if you'll get enough credit for it, but what you did by hooking into the system, Fort Worth, is a game changer for this community. And those are my comments.
Okay. So that sounds like we have city manager comments, too. So anything else that we have? Just the water and...
Water, that's it.
Right. And congratulations to the whole city. That's a big accomplishment for, for staff, council, and all of our citizens. So, all right. If we have no other agenda items, do we have a motion to adjourn?
I move adjourn.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?